2023, City Council Room. Our members of the council are present. Others include James Johnson, our treasurer, and our city manager is joining remotely this evening. Which I believe, can you hear us okay, Laura?
I can very perfectly, thank you.
Okay, just wanted to make sure. Because the chief moved the computer back a little farther from the table so they could get a bigger angle of the people sitting at the table. So I just wanted to make sure you could still hear us.
It's perfect and it's clear. Much appreciated.
Okay, thank you. The next item is to approve the minutes of December 19th, 2022, and I would entertain a motion.
So moves.
Motion made by Mr. Bashan. Is there a second to approve the minutes?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Wilson. Any discussion on approving the minutes? Then all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have it, motion carries. The next item is comments by members of the public. The first is Carol Dowd, and it looks like it's his repair of city sewer.
Good evening. Thank you so much for this opportunity.
And just to let you know, you have two minutes.
Yes, I know.
Okay. I have a timer going.
Okay, thank you. I wanted to just comment greatly on someone's attention, that I live on Spruce Street. And back in 2019, I had a tub of water in my basement, which actually turned out to be the sewer, coming in from the sewer. We had talked with, my husband was alive at the time. We had talked with the, he had talked with the city employee who thought that maybe we were using wipes, but unfortunately, we don't. I was in hospital administration for 30 years, and those are no-no. But, so I thought, well, okay, we called the plumber, and the plumber said, no, it's not your pipes. It's the street, it's the sewer on the street. So, long story short, my husband passed away in 2020. Since 2019, there have been no less than six backups in my basement. We had restoration company. We have had, finally, the city did come and told me that it was not my line. It was the sewer, it wasn't connecting correctly. However, but they couldn't do anything right now. So they come every two weeks, for the past year almost, and pump it out. And at that point, I have to flush, and, you know, I have to be home. I guess my biggest concern is that, number one, in the morning, the first thing I do is go downstairs and make sure it's dry. And before I go to bed, I go downstairs and make sure there's no water. And I'm just afraid for health hazards and for leaving my home. You know, if I go back for a vacation and come back, what will I find? So I just wanted to ask the council if there are any plans to fix the sewer lines on Spruce Street. Thank you for this time.
Okay, you're welcome. I'm sure Tom has made notes and knows about the issue, okay. Next, we have Susan Watson, Repair Sewer Issue Health Hazard.
I'm Susan Watson. I live on Spruce Street. I'm a neighbor of Carol's and a good friend of Carol's. I know what she's going through because many mornings when I leave to go to the, to my health club, I see the big white truck on the corner of Race Track and Spruce, and they're flushing the lines. Carol is right in saying that six times it's backed up into her basement. This is a really bad health issue down there. Even though she has restoration, she doesn't feel comfortable letting anyone go downstairs to use that beautiful, sort of a movie room that was put in because of it. What she didn't tell you is she's also spent up to $8,500 of her own money trying to get this resolved and clean up her place. I noticed that the next item on the agenda tonight is the Hazard Mitigation Plan Update. I would hope, because this is a very serious health issue, that this would be number one on your hazard mitigation plan because it is extremely dangerous and it's also very difficult for Carol to handle. Thank you.
Next, we have Anne Sherrill, Problems With Water Something. I can't quite read it.
Okay, that's me.
Okay.
I'm continuing along from the last time I was here. I gave all of you the general gist and a memo. So last time I raised the issue that in the last four, I'm sorry, in the last three budgets for sewer and water, the income that you were gonna get from sewer user fees was exaggerated by $400,000. And I asked, why would you do that? Why would you put $400 more dollars into saying that you're gonna get that much income when you knew for the last seven years you only got 1.1 million? And I figured it out. Budgets have to balance. And the estimated sewer expenses per year are 1.8 million. And if the only income you're getting is 1.1 million from all the user sewer fees and an additional $300,000 from any other kind of sewer income, you've got a deficit of $400,000 and your proposed budget can't possibly balance. So what did the city decide to do, apparently? Or the city management decide to do? It just said, oh, well, if we throw $400,000 more and claim that the user sewer fees are 1.4 million, then it'll balance because that'll be 1.8 expenses, 1.8 in income. The only problem with that is, it's not true. And what it's gonna cause, almost certainly, when you get to the actual expenses and the actual income, is a deficit. If you look at the...
Your time is up.
Okay, if you look, let me finish a sentence. Let me finish a sentence. If you look at the July 2021 to July 2022, last line of the sewer budget, in actual, actually, what happens? You already have a deficit for that year of $225,084. You don't yet know...
Hey, your time is up.
What the actuals are for the next two years.
Your two minutes is over.
Yep. I'll continue next time.
By all means. Next, we have Pam Lied's Budget Transparency.
Actually, it didn't say budget transparency. It just says transparency.
Okay, well, I'm sorry, but it was on...
But in reality, it's transparency in general. One of the things that's been, quote, "offered" to those of us who have questions about the budget is that we could meet with the city manager. As we're not the only ones who have questions, it would be more appropriate if a discussion of how that budget is structured, the water sewer budget, could be done in this meeting with everybody present who wishes to be here with the opportunity to ask the questions that we're not allowed to ask at any other time. It might solve a lot of what's happening. It might resolve some of the anger that's here on both sides of the questions. So I would ask that you consider that and that you respond in some way.
Thank you. And we have last Jennifer Hopkins' current budget question.
Yeah, thank you. I gotta hand a piece of paper to Jim Johnson. I happened to look at the Hazard Mitigation Plan, so I do have a piece of paper to leave with a couple of corrections. But I was looking at the income from the city taxes. And in, we're now showing that the income in property taxes that is received this year is $8.7 million.
School, school tax. That accounts for the entire amount collected.
Okay, so that's the entire... How did, why did it come in in one fell swoop? And why is the total amount going down since it first showed up in November? It showed up as...
I don't know why it's going down, but you collect the school and city taxes at the same time. And we pay what due to the school a month later. It's due on the 15th of November, not a month. And I had to pay the school this year by the 5th of December.
Okay.
Same thing happens in May.
So why, why does that budget line not reflect that figure? Because the anticipated budget is 4 million, 4,200,000.
Because that's the city, that's the city budget. That we collect at school.
The income, the income and expense, you don't break down, if I pay my taxes, you're not breaking down how much is for school and how much is for city. You're putting the total, you're collecting in that income line.
What I'm saying is in the city budget, it's the city's, the school has their portion of the whole budget.
So in, in one half of our taxes, we've collected over 8 million?
The other collector already has to pay the school.
Okay, alright.
They get more, they got more than we get.
I still think it's interesting that we don't show it because don't we have to show it as an outflow at some place?
Because we're, oh yeah, it shows it as an outflow. If you look towards the end of the general fund, it shows how much is sent to the school every year.
Okay, I'll check that. Okay, that's fine.
It's one of the last pages in the general fund.
Okay, it just looked really very weird, but also weird that it was...
Transfer to school.
Yeah, you can look at the figures there. I made a note on there for the Hazard Mitigation.
Current year-to-date, which shows your 8 million, and you can have it.
Alright.
This is a line item, I believe, for what he's paid the school.
Alright, great, thank you. I just saw it, I was wondering, thank you.
Okay, moving on. The next item is the Hazard Mitigation Plan Update. The council received a copy of it. We're not taking, of course, any action tonight because it's a lot of material to comprehend. This time, I guess I'll have the city manager make any comments about the Hazard Mitigation Plan.
Yep, thank you, Mayor Manette. The Hazard Mitigation Plan is been possible by a grant from the Vermont Department of Public Safety. We received a grant in the amount of $7,612.50. We were able to procure the services of the same consultant that wrote the plan back in 2015 and 2016. Paul Luciano is his name. We felt that was quite an advantage for the city so that we didn't have to start at ground zero. Paul has spent the last several months meeting with the planning commission and meeting with others to update the plan. He has presented the plan to the state Hazard Mitigation Planner, Brian McWalters, who's with Emergency Management. He has preliminarily approved the plan. It is now based on the council's adoption. So I wanted to go on the record to formally give you the plan. The plan has been posted on our website. This matter will be on the next agenda. And Mr. Luciano will be presenting what the changes are in the plan. So, council, if they have any questions, you'll be able to ask them directly to Mr. Luciano.
Okay, now this plan is all tied into FEMA, correct?
It's tied into FEMA, it's tied into our floodplain. I think when you start to read through it, you'll see it takes into consideration all of our other plans, including some of the language out of the recently adopted municipal plan.
Questions, comments from the council? So we'll have time to review this even more before the next meeting. But if I remember right, this, this whole mitigation plan actually did start with FEMA. It was a requirement, I believe, if you want to qualify for federal emergency funds if there was a disaster. And am I correct, Laura, in that?
Absolutely. This is a very important tool, and it's part of our strategy. And we would be remiss to not have one for the size of Newport.
Anything from the council on this right now?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I understand you said it's important to apply for FEMA greens, but what is it, what's in...
It's not, I meant, if you apply for FEMA funding, or even a homeowner, you have to have a Hazard Mitigation Plan. It ties into insurance for people who might be living in a floodplain. It might tie into insurance. And so you have to have a Hazard Mitigation Plan. Let's see, Laura, the first one was, we did it way back? I can't remember exactly, my mind.
I think it was approved in 2017.
Okay, yes.
And, and they've recently opted, like they have with the municipal plan. They used to be five-year plans. Now they're eight-year plans.
Right. And so, it all ties into FEMA. You have to have a plan for your community, especially if you're going for, say we had a natural disaster and you're doing, going for reimbursement with FEMA funds. So, as a major example, suppose the dam broke during a flood. I know they talk about it here, that's what made me think of it. Anybody downstream, you probably, you could technically declare an emergency, you know, a FEMA, most likely, and qualify, hopefully qualify for FEMA funding to, you know, for that. And so you have to have a plan in place.
Okay, I obviously dropped with the cloud.
Well, that's just one example.
Right, no, I understand.
Yeah. So, this will be on the next agenda. It will be a formal presentation to the council on the next agenda. It'll give the council plenty of time to review it before the next meeting. Okay. The next item is the Newport Ambulance Annual Contract. This is the contract that we enter into with the Newport Ambulance. The date was corrected. It now says from January, they're on a calendar year versus a fiscal year, so that's why we have to approve this now. It goes from January 1st to December 31st, 2023. And so we would need a formal motion to approve the contract. I don't like that motion. Motion made by Mr. Charbonneau, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Bashan, discussion? Laura, did you want to add anything?
No, this is a formality that allows me to sign the contract. And Jeff Joe Johansson, who's the executive director, presented at the last meeting. So this is a formality to make sure that the motion is on the record so that I can sign it and send it back, and we're good.
Okay.
Thank you.
So a motion was made and seconded. Any discussion?
Yeah, I just, on 10.4 and 10.5, last meeting I asked about the conveyance of, you know, vehicles and things like that would be conveyed exclusively to the city for no consideration. Again, I don't think the ambulance service is going anywhere. But, it's the same contract for everybody, so if that happens, it says it comes to us exclusively, but they said that, well, actually, it'd be everybody who has contract within, fight over the equipment. It's a technicality that probably never happened, but it's just one of those things that I think should be somehow corrected. But it's not a deal breaker for me, so...
So 10.4 and 5?
Yeah. Just because it says conveyed exclusively to the city. And that's, I don't think that's where the presentation was done because I asked about it. That's not exactly how it would work. It would be between anybody who had a contract to sort it out.
Laura, could you look into that for the next meeting? We won't, maybe we shouldn't approve this tonight.
I would ask you to please approve it, and I'll be glad to look into it. I hate to keep this out. This has been language that's been included in the contracts that we've had since we started this. So I have to look into it and will report hopefully to delay progress this month.
Well, I'll be honest with you. I don't feel comfortable having a contract approved by the council if there's questionable language. I know this was brought up at the last meeting. And so, I would, we're meeting in two weeks or three weeks, I guess, two weeks. Three weeks, and so...
Just come back with an answer on it.
Yeah, I think we need to have an answer on it. I don't know how the other council feels about it. If they want to... You have a question?
Yeah, mine was on number 11, where they had the wrong dates, so we just cross it out and initial it.
Yeah, you can do that.
I know you can do it, but that's, come on, this is a world of computers. Take you 10 seconds, bring it up on the screen, change the date, and have them sign it because when we got it the first time, we didn't have this gentleman's signature on there. So if Laura goes ahead and checks it out, it's just my own little dig today out of, put it on the computer and fix it.
Anything else, some council members?
What's the potential drought act if we push out two weeks?
I highly doubt, I can't speak for the ambulance, but I highly doubt that they would they would just stop serving the city knowing that we're gonna most likely approve it in three weeks. But I think we need to have that language clarified. We had a council person ask the question at the last meeting about it.
I understand.
We just have to, if you just withdraw the second.
You can have a vote, no?
You can always vote no this time, or you can withdraw the second and withdraw the motion.
Can we table it?
Yeah, we table it. So we'd have to have...
You withdraw.
You withdrawing? Your second?
Yes.
We draw it.
Okay. Now we would need a motion to table this until the next meeting.
Mr. Mayor, I'll make that motion and we table it till the 23 January meeting.
Motion was made to table this to, that's two weeks, yes.
Yeah.
January 23rd meeting, is there a second?
A second.
Motion made and seconded. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have it. This will be tabled and will be on the next agenda for a vote. The next item...
Mr. Mayor? What does, why does the city need a contract with the ambulance? And what is the, what is the above for this year?
We've had a contract for several years because we contract with them. They're a separate entity, so you want to have a contract. And what was the other part?
Well, what is the percentage increase this year?
I don't remember from the last meeting.
Okay, I can...
It was discussed at the last meeting. I honestly don't remember what the percent was. Mr. Johansson presented at the last meeting. I don't have my notes on that.
But the contract doesn't necessarily mean anybody in the city will get a transport without a, without a bill? Do they still get billed or the insurance? Yeah, yeah, whoever their provider is will still...
Go ahead.
Okay, yeah.
Okay. The next item is Authorization To Conduct A Tax Sale. Laura?
Yes, we historically requested approval to start the tax sale process the first meeting in the year, and that's tonight. And I'm asking for authorization, which is required, and asking for a motion to be made and approved and recorded in the minute so we can provide it to the city attorney. And that starts the process.
Okay. So we need a motion from the council to authorize the city manager to start the process of conducting a tax sale?
Mr. Mayor, I'll make that motion.
Motion made by Mr. Wilson, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Ms. Patterson, discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have it, motion carries. The next item is the Approval Of Land Conveyance with the Mated Day Parish Charitable Trust. Mated D Parish, what? Mated Day, did I say it right, the first line? Day. Day Parish Charitable Trust. We had a memo from the city attorney regarding this. The council members have any questions?
It's interesting that we don't really know how we ended up with this property to begin with.
It's kind of like the property over by Union Street there, on the corner there, that we sold to the people over there, the Autobody Place. City, there was no clue as to how the city ended up with that piece of property. And so, this is the same situation.
Can you tell us what the property is? I went and didn't see it attached to the...
Tuck Lane. It's called Tuck Lane.
Top of Pleasant Street? No, that's the...
Behind, almost behind the church.
It's up by, up behind St. Mary's Church, correct?
Yes, it is, yes, it is. There's two properties there, one, Kootu Property, which is the blue house right next to the church within five feet of the church. And then the other one was the Clark Curtis Property. And in between those two properties, there was a section of land about 20 foot wide, I'm thinking. And it used to be a walking path where the kids could go to school many years ago, where the horses used to go through there. And it was just sort of like a no man's land. You know, the city didn't tax anybody for it. But now that the church has purchased both of those properties, you know, we would like to eliminate that no man's land and move it back to the church.
I think originally that was gonna be a street, and it never happened.
And it never happened.
It's, basically, it's .24 acres, more or less, of a parcel of land. It's located on the westerly side of Raymond Ave. Just to give people an idea. And basically, it has to be warned before the deed is signed. It has to be warned for 30 days, if I remember right. And then once it's warned that it's gonna be sold, basically for a dollar, for 30 days, if no one has any issue with that, then it's basically, once the council approves this, it takes effect and I sign the deed.
Yep. It's a quick claim deed.
It's a quick claim deed, correct? So we would need a motion to approve the land conveyance.
I'll make that motion.
Motion made by Ms. Patterson, is there a second?
I'll second.
Seconded by Mr. Charbonneau, discussion?
Excuse me, Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
The city attorney provided precise language.
Oh.
And I would ask that that language be part of the motion, if I may?
Well, yeah, so I'll make the...
Yep, you're right.
Because nobody seconded that, right?
Yeah.
So unsimplified. Okay, we'll redo the motion.
We'll redo it. Okay. So I'll make the motion to approve the quick claim deed for the city of...
Modernay.
Modernay, sorry. I apologize. Modernay Parish Charitable Trust conveying .24 acres, more or less, parcel of land located westerly of Raymond Avenue with approximately 53 feet of frontage thereon that may have been known as Tuck Lane. And to authorize the city manager and/or mayor to execute any documents needed to close this transaction and complete the conveyance, including but not limited to quick claim deed and the notice of sale of municipal real estate.
That's the motion. Is there a second? Made seconded, discussion?
Just for reference, Modernay is St. Mary's Catholic Church.
I know that much. I just don't know how to pronounce it.
Then, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have it, motion carries.
Mr. Mayor, would anybody be willing to give up his or her copy of that? Or is it available?
Laura, was this on the website?
No, that was not on the website, but it'll be part of the minutes. And you shouldn't have any... And you should have in your packet the notice for the press. You can provide that to them. It's a notice of municipal real estate. The quick claim deed is also included in your packet. You're welcome to provide that as well.
Oh, okay, so the notice, so I can provide even the memo from the city attorney then?
I think that in town, there was nothing that was negotiated...
Nope, nope.
Yeah, it's on the table.
For an executive session, so I think you're good.
Nope. I'll give you mine, even though I'd really like to keep it, but I'll give you mine. Thank you. Because I gotta keep reminding myself, and so many days. Okay. Okay, moving on. Mr. Johnson, new business. Mr. Charbonneau. Mr. Wilson.
No.
I don't have any. Any new business?
No.
Any new business?
No, thank you.
Laura, any new business?
No, thanks.
Okay. Mr. Johnson, old business.
No.
Mr. Charbonneau.
The grandstand. Did you guys get the grant for that?
It was a press release that the grandstand, there's a lot of paperwork to be involved, but yes, the earmark came through for the 500,000. I mean, it was included in the budget, signed by the president. So it was one of the 15 projects that Congress, now Senator Welch put in the budget. And so it's a long process. I'm chatting with the town of Derby about theirs, because they got it a year ago.
So what's the next step? Do they...
Well, not everything has been put out yet, the links. I was going to go through it and then provide the city manager or everybody with the links so we'd figure out the complete process. It said, "coming soon," the links for the process. So they announced it, but they haven't got, at the time, they didn't have all the links working for the process that you go through.
Excellent. Thank you.
I was going to have it on the agenda, probably, maybe meeting in February, once, hopefully, they'll have all the links and everything of what needs to be done to proceed. But I thought it was good news, the 500,000. Considering he had over 100 requests and he can only pick 15 to go on the budget. Any other old business?
I'm looking.
Mr. Wilson?
No.
I don't have any, anything?
No, thank you.
Laura, any old business?
Could you wish for snow and cold weather, so that we can get this game rig and this sledding hill going? That would be great.
Yes, okay. Sounds like a plan. All right. The next meeting will be Monday, January 23rd, 6:30 PM here. And now we need a motion to adjourn at 7:08.
I'll make that motion.
Motion made. Is there a second?
A second.